Lord, present. I'd like to call upon a council member Lopez to lead us in pledge of allegiance. Mayor Pro Tim Gibbons, invocation.
Which can. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys remain standing. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day that you've given us. I thank you for allowing us to be here in this place. I ask for your wisdom and guidance as we continue to make decisions that will affect the community and the residents, Lord. Help us to make the decisions that will just edify you and your presence through here and edify each and every resident as we continue to grow through what we have. We thank you and love you. Amen.
Amen.
We need an approval of agenda. I don't have any changes. Did you have any?
No change.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as read.
And also.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Gibbons to approve the agenda seconded by Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
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 Yes. Let me comment. Open up the meeting at this time for anyone who cares to address the council for anything that is not on the agenda. Hearing none, we'll move on to council announcements and reports. Pete, you have anything you want to report tonight?
I did stop by the bulk waste collection at the Aquatic Center. And I really do like this event. I know that American Refuge gets a lot of credit for taking the time to do it, but I think if we keep it up and everybody catches the idea of having a set time to be able to discard of large items, I think it'll be helpful. Oh, I'd just like to say thank you to them for all their efforts.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, Caesar, you have anything?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Back down this way, Chen.
Yeah. We, not much going on, except I did attend a pop-up shop event to watch Mr. Espinoza selling Etsy. It was really good to see. That's all I have.
You know, I don't have nothing to report. I didn't get the opportunity to go to the American Refuge site there where they were collecting stuff from the community, stuff that people didn't want. But I do say that thank you very much, American Refuge, for doing that and hosting it. And like Councilmember Espinoza mentioned, those are great opportunities for the community to take advantage and to get rid of stuff that they can't haul away to, to the, to the dump site. So I hope the community took advantage of that opportunity and, and I, and again, I just want to say thank you to American Refuge and all those that are part of that event. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Yeah, I had a couple meetings that I had opened up. First one was on October the 11th. In the morning, I did meet with staff, public work staff, and we worked on a display downtown with the jack-o'-lanterns and I didn't go by today to see the wind kind of played a little bit of tumbling or moving around yesterday, but anyway, it's been fun to see the reaction of people that have been down there to take pictures and to, if you haven't seen, the jack-o'-lanterns lit up at night. It's really pretty cool, so. And then we had a SIDS final meeting with our staff, Chad and myself, and we're ready to send off our project to see if we can get some money for some big infrastructure projects in the community. Also, the evening, there was an AB 617. And I wanted to say that they did bring on a new facilitator, and so we welcomed them, called Harder and Company, and they gave us an overview of how they are going to be the neutral party, the third-party facilitator, and discussed with us expectations and goals from everyone that serves on this committee. And then also, the annual report was presented by the people from the Air District as to what we've accomplished in this last year. And especially, I think I had this put out to everybody, and I would hope that everybody's heard about the lawnmower trading event. It is scheduled for November the 7th from 11:00 to 2:00, and it's here at the Floyd's General Store on Walker. You need to bring in your mower and you'll get a new mower that's electric with no charge. You have to fill out some paperwork and all, but if you can't be there, you can always still apply and they'll give you a voucher that allows you to purchase a electric mower that you can replace your others. And I know even today I saw where they're pushing it really hard in the whole state to get rid of all gas mowers. So it's really a good opportunity to take advantage of this because once the money is gone in this program, then of course you're going to have to be stuck with buying a whole, a whole one by yourself. Also, I went to a community task force meeting. And just a couple of things that I thought was of interest. Coonness is, is giving books, donating books to our library, new library, which I thought was really exciting and important to mention tonight. Women's Club is working on a Christmas for Shafto seniors, and so if you're interested and you want to donate anything that in turn will be made up into a nice basket or a nice giveaway for seniors at Christmas time. Also, the Church of Christ has does baskets for the seniors, and they do it on every third Thursday. Also, I missed it. I don't know if anybody else knew about it, but they had a vendors event called Fall Fest, and it was by the Sports Foundation, and it was just past Saturday on the 16th. It was to help raise money for the foundation. Also, they announced, they, meaning the Rick District, announced that their sports complex groundbreaking was going to be held this spring. Didn't give us a date. I thought they had to have something ready before the end of the year, but by the springtime, they will be, you will be seeing some movement out there on that big open acreage. Also, we talked a little more about this waste hunger, not food. And the main thing with that is we're working with Kern County. Kern County already has this program. They applied for grant. They have lots of materials and they will share with us adding on to it. And everyone in the local Shafto area is hoping that they're ready to put this in motion by the first of the year, which means most of the food that will be distributed logistically with churches involved will come from Richland School, but then there are other opportunities for the stores, the grocery stores or any other places that have food, but the trick is that it has to move quickly. You can't let it just sit. It has to be refrigerated. If it needs to be kept warm, it would probably be frozen, which really adds to the logistics of being ready and prepared in order to only have this food available for a short time to get it out to the people that are in need. So there'll be more information coming on that one. That's all I had been. Right page here. Consent calendar. We're going to move down, and we have 11 items on the consent calendar. And we'll start with number one is checks, general checks, payroll, the overtime report, the minutes of our last meeting, October 5th. A special event permit for Shafto commanders. They're going to do a fundraising promotion at Veterans Park. Does anyone have any other details on it besides what we have here?
No, I don't have any extra details on it.
I mean, what are they doing for the fundraiser? I didn't say.
It's, they're going to have food there. They'll have, I think they may have some like auction items or some silent, silent auction type items.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Okay. I was just hoping to get more information, is what it was. The price is scheduled for October the 29th, which is a Friday. Okay, number seven is to introduce for second reading by title only, ordinance number 727, which is adopting development agreement for the northeast corner at North Riker and West Tillery. Those are those 10 lots that we have that we approved or accepted at the last meeting. Number eight is to accept the dedication of easement for street and public utility purposes at Floyd's General Store. And I believe most of it is just outside, isn't that correct? Yes. So it'll be a nice improvement for the outdoor area here. Number nine is to approve a new three-year service contract for aerial imaging services. A total of 75,000, but we pay 25,000 for the first year and then continues after that. Number 10 is to accept the Transit Development Act funds for the city of Shafto for this fiscal year, June 30th of 2020. And the last one is to accept independent accountants' report on agreed-upon procedures applied to our appropriations limit schedule that just ended June 30th of 2021. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve as read. One second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Gibbons, seconded by Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
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 Yes. And the next item is under management reports, and the first one is prohibiting street parking on State Route 43 Resolution Adoption.
So, Mary Council, these next two items are related to economic development projects. The first one, our Public Works Director, Mike James, will make the presentation.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the Shafto City Council, the planned car wash and other potential development across the street along the east side of Highway 43 will, as you can imagine, require access to Highway 43, direct access to 43. The highway is under the jurisdiction of Caltrans. Their staff have reviewed the most recent site plan for the car wash project and have conditioned approval upon the council adopting a resolution endorsing their recommendation for no street parking along this traffic corridor. And, and we, staff concurs with this recommendation. We help, it helps to ensure that both private property and cross streets directly accessing Highway 43 have a best line of sight possible for oncoming traffic on Highway 43. So through the assistance, with the assistance of the city attorney, the resolution was prepared to provide the requested support for no street parking. It was prepared specifically for the corridor between Lardoe Highway and Central Avenue for both sides of the road, and this is because this particular stretch, once the car wash is developed, really the possibility of widening the road for parking purposes is not going to be feasible. Whereas other stretches of Highway 43 could potentially be widened and street parking could become an option. So we're limiting the no parking support for the stretch between Lardoe Highway and Central Avenue. And so with that, the resolution as prepared also authorizes public works or city, city crews to install the no parking signs. Now, Caltrans probably can and should install these signs because it's technically their jurisdiction, but if it facilitates the car wash development, city funds can be utilized to install these no parking signs. And quite frankly, I think we can get it done a lot faster than Caltrans crews. So we're perfectly fine having that in the resolution. And it can be done without any budget action required of the council. So with that, we request your support in adopting, adopting the resolution to support the parking along Highway 43.
And that's between Central and.
Central Lardoe Highway, correct.
Okay. Hey, any questions or comments?
I have no problems with it, but are we experiencing people parking there right now?
No, and quite frankly, I think Caltrans just doesn't have the day-to-day experience monitoring Highway 43.
Gotcha.
So I think that just, they don't have a familiarity with that, but it's just good to have peace of mind that, you know, the part, it will be posted, there's no parking.
Do you know that people do park there at the pharmacy on the street? Yes, when I go by, I think, oh my goodness, because we have much, much more heavier, faster traffic. So that's a good move. And he has off, off-site parking, so. And any else that has a side street.
I think going along with that, even in front of the court.
Do they, do they park there too sometime?
On the court side.
Yeah, it's not a good deal. People move way too fast. I'm talking about, I don't know, Chief, have you noticed that? At the court too?
Court, not much, because the court has a really big parking lot.
Right.
I did notice it's.
The pharmacy? Yeah. You know, a short time ago, you could, because it didn't move so fast and there wasn't so much, but it's all the time now. Watch it.
The pharmacy does have a very small parking to begin with.
Yeah, but they have a side street.
That was.
Yeah, so that helps. Yeah, he, he should be all right.
Make a motion to approve. One second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Gibbons, seconded by Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes. And the second item is agreement for the sale to Nutrien Ag Solutions, a property at 250 Carver Street in Shafto.
Sir, Mary Council, this was one item that was discussed in the previous workshop as a city-owned vacant property that we are now moving forward with the sale of the property. And so with that, our Economic Development Director, Bob Meadows, will make the presentation.
Honorable Mayor and members of Shafto City Council, what, asking you for tonight, right, the agreement for sale to Nutrien Ag Solutions, Inc. for the property at 250 Carver Street? Yeah. Nutrien Ag is, is the world's largest provider of crop inputs and services. They've been that since 1983. Their parent company goes way back. Their home base is in Loveland, Colorado. They reached out to me last summer looking to relocate their retail operation in Delano, where they've outgrown the space to Shafto. We, in those discussions ultimately led to consideration of our property there at 250 Carver. And so that is what they would like to purchase from us. It's a vacant lot currently. In, in accordance with the Surplus Land Act, which you heard about from our city manager earlier, the Assembly Bill 1486, we did have to file the 60-day notice. That period expired without any inquiries from any housing authorities, and so we have been cleared to sell that property. It's according to that law. The property was appraised in May at $590,000. After the close of escrow, the company proposes to build a 42,240 square foot warehouse facility that will transact retail sales. The existing annual retail sales at their current location, which would be relocating to Shafto, is approximately $50 million. That translates into approximately $500,000 in new revenue to the city of Shafto from the sales tax. The buyer has requested that we reduce the total land area by the area of the existing drainage basin so that that's not useful property to them and so, and have the sale price adjusted. We, we have agreed to that. It's approximately 27,000 square feet, which comes to an approximate reduction in the sale price of about 30,000, meaning we can, it's approximately 560,000 that the property would be sold for. The property exact price cannot yet be determined because it will require that property lines be redrawn by the city staff and the exact size of the property will be known until that has been accomplished. Buyer and seller have agreed to a price of 145,679 per acre as a final price determinant. That's what it averages to be. We have also agreed on a 180-day due diligence period in order to close escrow on the sale of the land, and this is because of the timing that it takes within, for the process within a company the size of Nutri. So that is historically what they've experienced, and so after questioning with them, we understand that that is, and that takes shorter, and they'll do that, but that is the period that they.
That's in addition, starting now.
Once, once escrow is open, yes. So that, that would, that would leave a sale of the property in sometime in the second quarter of 2022, calendar year 2022. Construction of the warehouse then taking a while, so it will be into probably 23, 2023, before any sales actively are done in, in retail, but then we've got a light, nice, nice long future ahead of us. So staff, upon putting this together, we, we are recommending that the, this agreement for purchase be approved, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
You did say it's going to generate 500,000 into the, and through sales tax?
By relocating, yes, for their, their, their retail operation currently is generating approximately 50 million in retail sales, which equates to, for us, that 1%, approximately 500,000 a year.
So that would be going into our general fund, right?
Yes.
The truth I go to, that's a praise report. Thank you.
Any other comments?
They anticipate building rather quickly once the sales come through.
They'll need to go through that due diligence period, so I don't think, not until, not until they, yes, once, once escrow is closed, they will commence on that. They'll be working on that concurrently, plans and such. However, nothing will be approved or officially, maybe discussed. They, they'll commence on that process at the end of escrow.
Are we going to need to do anything to our streets? Anything in that area to, to move this along, or is that going to be part of the developer?
Nothing. We'll, we'll have to see as we go. Nothing we currently anticipate. So it, being in a vacant lot, we anticipate that's a simpler prospect.
Thank you. Just additional comment, Mayor Pro Tim, Mary Council, is they're, as a corporation, they take, when they purchase a property and they're due diligence, they go incrementally. So they don't approve all the due diligence at once. They go incrementally, so until they perform all the phase one, two, three, whatever they may need to have to do with the soils, they then get approval to the next phase and on and so forth, and that's the reason they asked for the 180 days, but they are committed to the project. We did offer as our incentive that we can on apparel track under, if they can, as corporation, while they're doing their due diligence on the, on the site, is to, for them to submit any of their building plans and start that process around parallel tracks and doing the, performing the site due diligence. And then if they wanted to, they can submit their building plan so that Dennis and our inspectors can start reviewing, doing plant checks and helps expedite that process. So we did offer that and based on their internal approvals, they said they would be able to consider that, and if they got approval, as they can move along to expedite that process.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve it, Red. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Lopez, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Gibbons.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes. Next item is the adoption of the City of Shafto compensation philosophy.
Honorable Council, this is a, a framework, to be well, for, that states how the city will compensate our employees. Our HR manager will provide, provide a high-level overview of what the philosophy entails. It is not a policy. It's rather a framework that says basically how we will work towards compensating our employees, looking at it from a high level in terms of full compensation package. And if anything, there's more of symbolic philosophy. It's not a policy that commits us to how we do it. But it does let our employee base know how we will approach that as we move forward, especially in these economic times.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers of the Shafto City Council, before council today for consideration and approval is the compensation philosophy that establishes the city's position about employee compensation. The compensation philosophy strives to maintain integrity and fiscal responsibility, provide equal pay for equal work, attract and retain high-quality employees to provide high-quality service to the public, and provide growth and development opportunities to employees maximizing their potential within the city. Additionally, the compensation philosophy establishes factors and limitations that the city will take into consideration when establishing employee compensation, such as total compensation, which includes base salaries and benefits, the long-term fiscal ability to pay for that level of total compensation without diminishing the level of service to the public or increased budget deficits, relevant labor market competitive competitiveness based on classifications, and other relevant factors that may impact the city's ability to fund compensation packages, such as unforeseen economic regulatory or level of service changes. The objective to the city's compensation philosophy are to be transparent to the community, communicate the city's financial position and budget, and open dialogue, innovative approaches, and collaborative efforts with employee groups, unrepresented employees, benefit providers, and other public agencies. That is what is in the, the compensation philosophy, so I'm available for any questions.
Questions, Mary?
Very nice.
We have resolution number 2833.
Make a motion to approve, as read.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Lopez, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Gibbons.
Yes.
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 Yes. Fourth item is to provide direction on the City of Shafto's priorities for the use of Federal American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, which we call ARPA.
So, Mary Council, this is an item for discussion, direction. We're not asking to approve the items tonight, rather we're seeking your input and direction. The staff has taken the liberty of, we have a PowerPoint, here we go, of preparing a list of recommended projects that are consistent with the U.S. Treasury guidelines on how we can expend the ARPA monies. So. Okay, I think it's working. So a little bit of background, I'm not getting into the details of this, other than the ARPA money was signed in earlier this year. It's a 1.9 trillion economic stimulus bill that was signed March 11th, and of which 65 million, 65 billion was earmarked for local governments nationwide. That's approximately 20,000 town, cities throughout the country that were slated to receive part of the 65 billion. The 65 billion was allocated using block, block grant formula, which is our CDBG, New Development Block Grant Formula for the city. We were allocated 4.8 million as part of our allocation. As of July 13th, we received half, so ARPA made, is making payments over two years. So we received the first installment this year of 2.4, and then next July, we'll receive the second 2.4, and then that'll be the full amount of our allocation. We have until December 31st of 2024 to expend the monies, consistent with the U.S. Treasury guidelines. There are restrictions on how we can use the monies. One, they can be used to replace lost revenue. They can be used for economic development, including aid to household, small businesses that were affected because of the COVID, like hospitality and tourism, direct response to the COVID pandemic, water, sewer, broadband, infrastructure type of investments. And then on June 17th of this year, the U.S. Treasury released the compliance and reporting guidance for the program. Getting right into it, you, what you have before you here and what was included in the staff report is a, the projects that were identified at the staff level and with the brief description, what department or division was asking for that money. The first column with the dollar amount is the requested estimated amount. That's what, what staff initially requested. And then in the next column is the recommended amount that we're, we're asking you to consider to move forward with. So the first column is simply what we estimated for that project. The next column is what we're actually recommending that you consider to move forward. This is a recommendation. You'll obviously have the opportunity to approve it, modify it, or reject it altogether, but this was provided to you as a means to, again, stimulate some discussion. Just for the, for the benefit of the public, some of the projects that were considered, this is the public works list of projects. One, it was a community park at the Aquatic Center. Two, as you know, we'll, we'll provide an update here. We have the swimming pool over there that needs, that's in dire need of repair, not just the mechanical in terms of the pump and some of the other equipment like that, the resurfacing of the pool itself, but even the locker room and, and the showers, I think, are definitely could use a facelift. But even the locker room and and the showers, I think, are definitely could use a facelift and so in its totality. There's a considerable amount of work that needs to be done. One idea that was considered was to just close down the aquatic center altogether and develop a splash pad, skate park, playground, picnic area. That amount is estimated at seven hundred thousand, but as you see, we're not recommending this for funding. But like I said, this was something that was considered. The next one is conducting assessment of the capital improvements and repairs of the deteriorated aquatic center. This is an estimated request of about twenty five thousand dollars and we are recommending that we do an assessment. It's my understanding and our public works director can chime in here when I'm done. Is that we did do a assessment sometime back in terms of the pool and what it would cost to either repair it or build a new one. And I think it was like three or four million dollar price tag or something like that. And so rather than us trying to estimate, guesstimate what all the work needs to be done is that we're proposing that we would hire a consultant that knows about pools and can come in and give us a report of what all the things we need to do to bring up this pool so that we'd be able to utilize it. We are in discussions and continue to be in discussions with our external partners, which is Richland School District, the high school. And the Shafter Parks and Recreation District. The the private swim club has been part of those discussions, but they've shared with us that they're not in any financial position to be an active financial contributor because they have a very small budget. And for them to be able to contribute anything significant would mean raising their prices for their for their swim club. And it's not something that they they can afford to do. So it really leaves it down to the high school, which is willing to continue that partnership, Richland and the and the in the recreation district. Then in fairness to the process and for us to really know what what all the repairs that need to be done, we're proposing that we allocate twenty five thousand to have an assessment conducted. To truly identify.
We didn't already have that with the firm that we had hired that was gave us the four million dollar project. They didn't already identify all that?
I thought they did. Mayor Proud, I think I believe the project conceptual presentation that was made by already Melby was really focused on the locker rooms and the snack bar and the amenities. Not so much the mechanical aspects of the pool and the deck. It was more more the interior rather than the exterior. So what I think the city manager strategy is here is to leverage that past analysis of the interior and then seek out input for the exterior of the pool. Pump and motor, the deck, the pool, the surface, the pool itself, and then and develop a complete comprehensive outlook for this facility. Not just the pool, but the indoor facilities as well that exist there.
So are we gonna look at another three to four million dollar project?
That's something to we'll take another look at that price tag and whether there's something in between a four million dollar project and a you know, a project that simply restores the pool. We'll definitely make that. We'll definitely investigate that and make that option available to.
Do we know how old that pool is?
Taking thirty forty years?
Oh, like you said, it's more than that. Oh, it's much more than that. Oh, yeah. Because it was there back in the sixties. Yeah.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
I brought my horses to drink water.
Yeah, it was back there. Hey, these guys weren't even born.
No, not at all. I wasn't there at that time when you lifeguarded. So I thought we had CDBG grants of funding that was already gonna be starting to resurface that pool. It's something we talked about, I believe, April this year.
That's a small amount.
Well, the that was the original intent. The CDBG funding was significantly scaled down to eighty three thousand. And then the scope of work was downsized respectively to focus on a covered picnic area. And then the counties, the county is the administrates CDBG funds and quite frankly, the county's inability to deliver a funding agreement really lost, forced that project to lose some momentum. So the council collectively voted to consolidate all of the current CDBG funding available into one park space project, which we're actively pursuing.
Correct.
So what this says to me now is that the pool won't be ready for next summer either. I mean, that's no, there's no way. So was that discussed at the meeting too?
Yes, with the external partners?
Yes.
Yes, they're aware of it.
Okay, because we're gonna have to move pretty darn fast if we're gonna invest a huge amount of money in there. That's going to bring that pool up to a brand new facility.
Yeah, and we've we've been in in communication. We just had this meeting with them last week.
Last week.
Just last week, in which we talked about it. We're all strategizing together. It's not like we're going in there and telling them, here's what's gonna happen. We're
Yes, but they're twenty thousand dollars that they're gonna put in for their share of the use certainly doesn't match the millions.
No, or or the O and M, the ongoing operating and maintenance cost. Just some rough numbers. We got the high school, but even Richland is not a significant amount. Neither is the rec district. We know the rec district is looking at building their sports complex, so they have to be able to invest some money for that. I can tell you, between the three entity, our external partners, I mean, they're willing to contribute, willing to continue to be our partner. But they too have limited dollars and it's not anywhere near the amount we need even just.
Well, I just want to make sure that we are aware up here before we decide to do this assessment. And then we say, no, we're not gonna go forward because it costs millions of dollars to.
So we would go incrementally. The if you were to direct us to go ahead and move forward and bring this back on the list that you will ultimately approve and how we allocate the ARPA monies. This is again a recommended list, which that's why we're seeking your input. So once if you were to approve it. Let's say if you were to approve, this is one of the projects, we still have to prepare an RFP, put it out, we bring back to you the
Okay.
There's still a process to go forward.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, is our group willing to put this assessment in because we are going to invest in a brand new pool? That's what comes down.
For the community.
Yes.
For the community.
I would rather not put the money in as assessment and at least fix to get us back to a point where we could be ready to operate next year.
Well, I think we need to do the assessment, but I think we also need to look at getting this thing ready.
When we saw that number from ord ord.
Ortiz maybe.
Yes. I can't even remember saying. When we saw that number, it wasn't just for the aquatic center, but it included the decking. Because that was something we talked about with them that day and they were going back further to the deck and everything around it.
Right. So it's gonna be, I mean, depends on what we're gonna do, but I what do we need to have it ready for summer?
That's where I'm at, yes. We don't really frankly know that the district has any interest in operating it this summer. What the critical path with the pool is the high schools desired use for it as early as January. So through our most recent meeting with the 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 high school district and the other stakeholders is that it's pretty clear that even if we have the green light to invest the money in the pool today, that we could not get that done before January. Unfortunately, the conversations have transpired over the past few months, but there haven't been any firm commitments from the other stakeholders. So quite frankly, lost some time to be prepared for the swim season in January.
All right, I'm not saying January, I'm saying summertime. I mean, we the school, I understand because the high school now has to transport. They have to leave the area in order to get their swimming for the students. But I'm asking for the community itself to have something ready so they can use the pool in the summer.
That's really a question for the rec district because they're the ones who staff the pool with lifeguards and then so they need to figure out what their level of commitment is.
So has that been addressed?
If I can just interject really quickly. I think before we went get into an operator, I think we need to address the repairs. And and quite frankly, we've taken an estimate of what we think those repairs of about a hundred thousand. But we don't know for sure that's exactly all the repairs we need to do to get the pool pool open. So we need, as Mike said, we need to replace the 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 motor or the pumps and the decking. We think it's about a hundred thousand dollars, but we don't know for certain. So one option is we can put some specs together and put it out to bid and see what the bids come back. But there's also the risk that once they start doing the repairs and getting into the mechanical, that we may find that it's more more severe in terms of the repairs that we need to do and that price goes up. That's why we're recommending doing an assessment to get a better idea. And estimated cost of what exactly we need to do. I don't know when the last time of us have had a chance, I was there a couple of months ago and the lockers are in bad shape. I mean, they they need a facelift altogether.
But the lockers aren't the swimming part of it.
No, right. But I'm just saying, if the swimmers are gonna go in there to change and use the facility, I think that needs to be addressed as well because they're in pretty bad shape and the entire facility has been deteriorated. And I'm thinking that we would at least need to do a facelift, a little paint job, make some minor repairs, the entryway, the forty year area. And the concession stand, it's been neglected all this time. If you almost feel it has been abandoned and it looks abandoned. And if we're gonna do those repairs, it's more than just doing the pool. We would need to address that as well because the swimmers are gonna have to go in that area. That's why we we think strategically, it makes better sense to look at it, do an assessment. Combine it with the assessment we already have and then get a total amount. And then we can pick and choose what can we afford to to make the repairs. I can tell you that based on discussions we've had with our external stakeholders. The majority of that is going to fall on the city because they don't have the financial means to contribute to to the pool. In terms of the capital.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, when are we gonna have this and are we willing to spend the millions of dollars? I mean, an assessment of twenty five thousand is nothing. We already know the costs are expensive over there.
So that question goes to us.
That's what I'm saying.
Are we willing, Pete, are you willing?
That's exactly right. You know, because we sat in on those meetings with the rec district and
The question's not for them, it's for us.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, so maybe put it on the next next uh next council meeting and
And we can approve the assessment tonight, but we need to have a big discussion as to what we're gonna invest in this. And that means with the other stakeholders because they need to be part of it.
They're they're a part of it, but like they both.
No, they won't be because they're not committing to the
But they're very small of a fraction in the big picture.
No, they're only wanting to put in twenty thousand.
Well, that's all they got. That's what they were just saying.
You're missing what I'm saying. No, they don't want to set the program up.
We don't know that. We haven't got that. He said
Yeah, he said that.
He says, let's talk about, are we willing to invest that money?
So so give an example, our our estimated O and M cost is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's what we estimate in terms of ongoing whole materials and whatnot yearly per Yes, annual basis. And our partners, bless their heart, you know, they sharpen their pencils, they're between the three, we can raise maybe sixty or seventy thousand. That would go towards the maintenance. So we're still short about sixty thousand on an ongoing basis that the city would have to pick up. That's an example of the shortfall that we have, just the annual maintenance cost that we have. And and the partners have expressed that they're committed, but they too have limited budgets in terms of how much they can.
You didn't address the operations of it.
The on the and maintenance.
My rec district is gonna do it.
What we estimate for the cost, the operating and maintenance cost is gonna be about a hundred and thirty thousand a year, regardless of who's operating, whether it's the district or whoever may be. In total, the three partners, how much they can contribute is about sixty seventy thousand of what they can contribute. It doesn't matter whether it's the rec district, they estimate they can contribute only a certain amount of dollars towards it. The high school can only contribute so much and Richland School District can only allocate so much. So that amounts to about sixty seventy thousand dollars between those three partners. And they're committed, but that means that the remaining sixty thousand on an annual basis for the operating maintenance would fall on the cities. But for us to make up that difference, that's an example where we know we have a shortfall just on the annual maintenance and operation.
So that's a question for council. Are you willing to pick up the tab and then ultimately don't depend on if if we're gonna wait on the record or 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 the school because let's say we we go ahead and move forward with this and they cancel out, is that are we gonna stop the project? We have to look at the big picture. Are we willing to pick up the whole tab? That's the that's the question.
We're gonna spend millions and and I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I'm just saying rec district is not gonna operate. They told us that before.
Then, okay, that goes back to what I just said.
We will.
Pretend that the rec and the high school and Richland School District is not a partner. Are we willing to take the whole tab? That's the question here.
Yes, it is. We need to have a meeting. We need to have a meeting. I mean, you're new at it because you weren't here with the history part of it. And we need to have a meeting and we need to have commitment, a strong commitment in how it's gonna all come together.
So at this time, we should just scratch the assessment, scratch the assessment, put it
I'd put the assessment in there and then still have this meeting.
One last question. If the rec says, no, we're not gonna participate in it. So what now what?
Then we'll have to additional.
Absolutely.
And we need to be willing to do that.
Speak of on be on behalf, I'm not speaking for the district, but I feel like I need to say this. The district is is willing to be a partner, but they only can contribute somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand a year. That's what they've come back to us and said, within our financial position. We wanna be a partner. We understand the value of the of the pool and what it means to the community, given our budget. And it's a far stretch, but we feel comfortable that we can contribute twenty thousand towards the ongoing maintenance and operation of the pool. Richland, Richland School District, they do in kind in terms of the the grass and the landscape, and then they contribute another ten thousand dollars. The high school is twenty five, Mike? Yes, yeah. The high school is twenty five, so that's thirty five and twenty twenty about fifty five, sixty thousand. They've committed. They said we can contribute that amount towards the annual operation and maintenance cost. We're there, but then that means that the the remaining amount falls on the city. So they they're there. They wanna they wanna be a player. They wanna be a partner, but that's all they can.
On good faith.
I'm sorry?
On good faith.
Yes.
That's not definitely my point. My point is on good faith. What what happens if something happens to their budget? The state comes down, cuts their budget, then what?
See, I'm not questioning the amount of money that they've committed for the maintenance part. I'm questioning the fact that somebody needs to operate it over there. And are we willing to do that? Are we willing to go out and hire the the we're gonna be doing recreation in a big time. That's what I'm sure you guys, do you understand that? We will be hiring our own people. We will be doing our own thing in the pool. It is the city's investment. They are only contributing because they're going to be using it in their programs. And if everyone understands that and that's where we wanna move forward and they're completely out of any part of the operation.
And Mary, you're absolutely right. As I'm understanding you, yes, so that we're basically taking on that commitment. Let me give an example. It's no different with the library. We made a decision, established our own library. We have a partnership with VC. But we made that decision, this decision, knowing that if something happens to that partnership with VC. We're responsible for the ongoing operation and maintenance of our library. Similarly, it's a similar situation here with
You see where I'm saying now?
Yeah, but if they help out, that's a blessing. That's just
Well, because they're part of the program.
And we want them, but I'm just saying.
It basically would be a city program.
Right. Now, we want everybody out. We want more entities involved. We want more.
We need to have a meeting. I would like to have a meeting, but let's put this assessment in.
So just for clarification, when you're saying a meeting, you want this as a future agenda item or a meeting with?
I think we need to have the stakeholders and a couple of us or whoever.
And some of the board members. Sure. We'll follow up. We've been having these discussions at the staff level. We'll circle back with them, tell them that we'd like to have a a meeting with some of their board members and go from there.
Yes, appreciate that. Okay.
So can we digress back to the original question?
It's in the assessment is in.
We are going to keep the assessment. We're gonna spend the twenty five thousand.
We need to see.
To tell us what the problem is. So you don't have to make a decision. I mean, you can direct me. I'll go through the list and then you can come back and say we want them all. Or which ones you wanted not move forward with.
So where there's, this is not an actionable item tonight.
No.
No, it's just a discussion direction.
Thank you.
We don't want to put pressure on you to make the decision tonight on it.
You can't even drink two cups of coffee now.
Well, no, but I will. I will tell you when I My intention was not to go through the twenty five thousand because I was under the impression we had already went through this assessment before. Now, price has changed, right? We're we're definitely dealing with an influx of or an increase in prices, but why spend twenty five thousand dollars to do something we've already done?
Well, we can research that with this meeting.
Which which is what I'm hoping we do, yes.
And for clarification, Mike, the initial assessment was not all the mechanical? I don't believe it included mechanical. The next one is the Manal Park irrigation supply line. This is to construct a dedicated irrigation pipeline for the non portable well at Manal Park. You heard from our public works director at the the previous meeting in which some of the electrical work that was being done will also benefit this project as well as some of the work that's already been done. So the request is a hundred thousand. The recommended amount is a hundred and fifty thousand as well. We have a water meter installation to fund five hundred service meters in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand. We're seeking some grant funding through the state and so at this time, we're not recommending this for We're seeking some grant funding, uh, through the state, and so at this time, we're not recommending this for, uh, funding. The other is a water conservation rebate pilot program, uh, fifty thousand. Um, this would be a rebate program focusing on replacement of grass with drought tolerant alternative landscaping. Um, at this time, um, we're not recommending the fifty thousand. The next is Veterans Park Basketball Court, um, and the following one is, uh. Soccer field lighting, both have veterans part. Uh, we had some discussion on improving veterans part. Installation of basketball courts, some additional lighting as part of both the strategic plan workshops in our budget. And, uh, we do have some, uh, C D B G monies that we might be able to leverage along with these funds. And in event that the C D B G monies can cover the, the improvements. We can move these ARPA monies into another project and bring it back to you for further dis- direction. At this time, we're asking to go ahead and recommend the two hundred and fifty for the basketball courts and four hundred thousand for the lighting. Kirshman Field Park, again, this was a project that was discussed as part of the strategic plan workshop. To add an addition, an additional, uh, field and some lighting at, at the park. The request is four hundred thousand. This, uh, recommended amount is four hundred thousand. So this would increase the. Playfield, I guess, for lack of a better term, by putting a second field that more than one team can practice. Um, and we can maximize the usage at Kirshman Park for the, um, softball and baseball, whatever they use it for. Wastewater collection system inspections, rehabilitation. This was to, uh. Conduct the collection system inspection and survey. Uh, and we do structural and chemical deterioration, extend the service life. Uh, this is a wastewater treatment project. Requested amount was two hundred thousand, uh, and we're not recommending for funding. Education is, uh, requesting two projects. This will continue to enhance the amenities we have at the chapter learning center. And created is a critical community hub for internet access and outdoor recreation, socialization. As you know, uh, the G A F is out there already building. Uh, they've started doing the footings and we had a chance to go by there. Uh, they're doing all the work for it to the extension of the, um, chapter learning center. And so this project would consist of increasing broadband access to the public, create outdoor spaces for study, recreation. Include a locker room for touchless book access. The requested amount was a hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred. And the recommended amount is a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred. Um, another concept that we talked about and we, I think the education partnership at, council at health committee. Um, talked about this when we were talking during COVID with our external partners about expanding broadband capabilities. This would provide public broadband of veterans part and we would create a Wi-Fi vaxis, uh, for the neighborhood there. This is a nineteen thousand dollar request and the recommended amount is nineteen thousand. Police Department, uh, this is, uh, two projects for the, uh, the police department's range. Range is used, uh, as part of the ongoing post requirement so that the training that our officers have to, uh, take. Pursuing to how many hours they have to have a post-training. The first project is, is for continued enhancements to the range. Uh, this is the addition of five additional target, or, um, well, I'm not sure what I would call them. Automatic targets. Uh, the request says eleven thousand. We're recommending eleven thousand. The other is a range classroom. Um, if you've had a chance to go out there to the shooting range, it just has a covered patio area, but no classroom area. And as part of that training, our officers oftentimes just huddle under that patio area. By having a classroom and they have a small classroom area, but it's very small. They can't fit very many people. And the mod, uh, the classroom, it's, it would be a modular classroom. Uh, that would also include some bathroom accessories to accommodate the students. The request is a hundred thousand. And the recommended amount is a hundred thousand. In, uh, the human resources department, we have, uh, premium pay. This is premium pay for the essential function employees. That fall within the critical infrastructure categories. These were, are for the frontline workers that were, um. Actively working during the entire COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, requested amount is five, five hundred and eighty-five thousand. The recommended amount is five hundred and eighty-five thousand. The next item is COVID testing. As we all know, the federal government has instituted a mandate. Of, uh, mandatory testing or vax, vaccine, getting vaccinated. Foreign employer with a hundred employees or more. City of Chapter, we have approximately a hundred and twenty employees, so that main, we, that mandate would apply to, uh, to the city. That requires that if an employee is not, uh, vaccinated, we have to do weekly COVID testing of that employee. Uh, we estimate, uh, based on our numbers, uh, that we would need approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And we're recommending the full two hundred and eighty thousand. This is what I would call the unfunded mandate by the federal government. Uh, the downside of this is that there's no ending. Um, there's no. Like, you have to do mandatory testing through July first or, or there's no ending. So as far as we know. Uh, this two hundred and eighty thousand, once we were to expend those monies. We would still have to comply with that mandatory weekly testing, which is foreseeably gonna fall on the sixth general fund. For us to do that, men to comply with that mandatory requirement.
And these are for the people that are not vaccinated?
Correct.
Okay, do we know how many we have vaccinated? How many we don't?
Uh, we estimated this, so, um. And we're doing this at fifty. Yeah, we're estimating fifty employees citywide are not vaccinated. And at about a hun- a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars a, a test. Um, so even at a hundred fifty employees, that's five thousand a week. Uh, that's twenty thousand a month. So you can do the math for, it adds up pretty quick. But it is for unvaccinated employees. And it's a federal mandate. In Caloosa, we'll be putting these, we'll be enforcing and putting this out and we are required to meet that, uh, that mandate.
If, if we're required to do that, how are we estimating the numbers? Shouldn't we have a hundred percent accurate number? On how many people will need this test?
We have that.
So. We continue to almost on a weekly basis get employees that submit their proof of vaccination. So we're estimating that by the time the mandate, we're just projecting that it'll be fifty employees. Uh, it could be plus minus, um, based on how many employees between now and then decide to get vaccinated.
See, we all had to sign a paper.
Correct. Yeah, I thought, I thought there was a deadline on that. And that's why I'm asking the question.
A deadline.
I thought we had a deadline on when that card was to be in. So then at that point.
I mean, yeah, there's a deadline in the vaccination. You can tell you want.
But it changes then when you get vaccinated.
Got you.
The only employees right now that we are testing weekly are the ones that fall under the, uh, excuse me, the education category. So some of our teachers, tutors over at the chapter learning center, uh, we are those that are not vaccinated. We are doing the weekly testing. But this would be for all other employees that are not within that education. And, uh, the I T department, uh, just a couple of small projects. One is replace the network equipment at Veterans Hall to again, uh, increase public Wi-Fi. This is a request of ten thousand. We're recommending it. Well, for funding in the amount of ten thousand. Uh, the other is, um, additional security cameras at Veterans Park or Veterans Hall. Uh, the request is for sixty-five hundred and we're recommending sixty-five hundred and funding. So in total. The requested amount and was, was three point eight million, as you can tell, two point four seems like a lot of money, but it really isn't. And with the recommended projects, we, uh, expand the full amount of two hundred and forty. Uh, I can tell you in terms for discussion purposes. Go back on this thing as, you know. On these two, as you know, we are in, in labor negotiations with a couple of our unions and we know, so. Uh, as you give direction, these would be two that we definitely ask that you direct us to move forward with. One, like I said, is related to our ongoing labor discussions. The other is a federal mandate. That we do have to comply, that we don't use ARPA monies, we'll have to use general fund monies. And so we're recommending that because ARPA monies do, uh, to allow this type of expenditure, it is eligible. Then we use the ARPA monies to pay for that. So of the total list, these would be the two that we definitely. Need to get your okay to move forward. So we don't need a decision tonight. This was for discussion, but the discussion, the direction would be, as I go back. Uh, the list of projects that we recommend is just to get a consensus from you, which is to move forward with. Because then we would come back at a future council meeting with the actual list of those projects with the funding. To approve the appropriation of that two point four now.
Any other comments? Okay, the ones that we left off are really ones that we may still need and may still pick up in some other way or just delay for whatever. Could even be next year's allocation.
Yeah, we could move them forward, exactly. So we have a.
And we'll have others that'll come forward too. So, yeah. Any other questions in on it? Okay.
So just for clarification, the, the list that's on here, with the exception of the swimming pool. Are you okay with moving those forward or leave, take out the swimming pool, leave the swimming pool? Like, unless you wanna take other projects that you see that you.
That's what I asked. Does anyone else have any other?
Move forward with it.
Okay, so we are now down to, whoops, wrong page here. Okay, we need council manager comments and reports.
Certainly one item on there, Mary Council is, um, with the upcoming holidays is, um. Consideration, if you wanna, um, cancel the, uh, second meeting in December. And the first meeting in January, and I'll have you as being to provide some more detail on that.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. Um, we are asking direction, uh, for canceling the second meeting in December or, and. The first meeting in January. As you know, those are the holiday, the holidays are coming up. So city hall will be closed, um, due to observing the holidays, Thursday, December twenty-third and Friday, December twenty-fourth. Also Thursday, December thirtieth and Friday, December thirty-first. Um, due to this holiday schedule, the regularly, regularly scheduled meeting of December twenty-first is, falls on the first week of the holidays. Some staff will be here, but I don't know about, you know, councils' plans for the holidays. Um, so we are asking if you want us to still have that meeting or cancel. Uh, we have historically canceled the first meeting in January and that falls on January fourth. So we would have to print and publish the agenda for the January fourth meeting, December twenty-ninth. And a majority of all staff is planning to be off that week. So it'd be really difficult for us to actually publish and post and, or we would have to have all, and all staff reports. Do very early, probably a whole month in advance. So we're just asking for your input and direction on how you would like us to move forward and with that, we would bring that back to council, council. And ask for that cancellation.
Ask for myself a model state for those two weeks, so.
You are.
Yeah.
For, for which two weeks?
Um, starting about December twentieth all the way through about the fifth.
You leave the Wednesday?
Yes, ma'am.
Or two, what is it?
The twenty. Yeah, so I'm gone for two weeks vacation.
And the fifth is a Wednesday.
Yes. Okay, um.
I don't mind the cancellation of the fourth, but.
Yeah, the twenty-first, I think is pretty long because then we don't meet again until the end of January.
Right.
And so, yeah, as long as we can have three people and we still have staff on duty, you could put out an agenda then for the meeting of the twenty-first.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Or yes, we can hope, we can also hold special meetings if something does arise.
Yeah, I. The seventh to the eighteenth is a long time.
Yes, it's a long.
I understand where you're at on the twenty-first because of what week that is. I, I do get it. I don't know if there's a way to hold something before then, if we need to.
You could have a special meeting the week before. The only issue with special meetings is that we cannot adopt ordinances especially.
But don't put an ordinance out there.
Let me just add that, you know, uh, we, we, we now provide to you, um, our agenda matrix. In which we forecast and plan of agenda items. And so in anticipation of the holiday season and knowing that some staff would be in and out, we've, um, planned. Policy matters coming to you accordingly to not leave any urgent matters to the end. Spreading that work out, uh, foreseeably, we do have the twenty-first, it's gonna be a live agenda with nothing. Uh, we would require urgent matters, but we can plan for that. There'll be more probably ministerial matters that come before you.
I understand the fourth, that makes sense. I said get closer, get into the November timeframe, see what it looks like at that point. And there's a way that we make it and don't have to do it, great. If not, then at least we know we're there.
So just for clarification, the fourth, you're okay with, right? And the twenty-first, we still plan on it. If it looks like there's not much on it, we can bring it back or.
We can decide on the first of December.
Yeah, all right. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
All right, and then just really quick, Mary Council, again, a friendly reminder, if you have not already RSVP for the employee appreciation dinner. That's just three weeks away on November twelfth. So if you do plan to attend, please RSVP. There's the link that has been provided. If you don't have it, I'll have you as being to send it back out. Just register RSVP and that way we can get a head count for the caterer Christmas times here, make a minute.
Holidays. Okay, any questions to staff?
And with that, that concludes, we don't have any other department directors making any, um, reports. So that concludes any additional items.
Okay, good entertainment. Motion to recess for closed session. And we're going to cover conference with, uh, labor negotiators, staff with, um. S E I U, which is the service employees and the chapter POAs, which is the police officers. Motion to recess.
Make a motion going recess.
And it's seven oh six, I believe.
One second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. We are recessed.
Just meeting and wants to leave. And I'm going to ask our city attorney to give us a wrap up.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned earlier tonight, the city council recessed in a closed session. All members were present. There was one item on the closed session agenda. It was conference with labor negotiators concerning the groups listed on the agenda. City council heard a presentation from its negotiating team, provided additional direction concerning those negotiations, and we have no further reportable action.
Okay. There are any other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion and a second all in favor. Say aye. I oppose no. We are adjourned.
No dodges.